Go right.
Yep.
All righty. So, seeing the presence of a quorum, I am calling to order the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee at six thirty-one on January eighteenth and we'll start with a roll call vote. Just gonna, just gonna go in screen order here, so. Uh, Margaret?
Margaret present.
Sarah Bass?
Kenny present.
Jean?
Jean present.
Allison?
Allison present.
Irv?
Irv present.
Peter?
Peter present.
Jennifer?
Jennifer present.
Steven? Steven going once. Steven. Okay, so me, present, Ben, present. So, we will start with the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? From the last meeting there? I see one head nod. Couple of head nods there. All right. So. Did anyone have any changes that they wanted to make any corrections here? Uh, Margaret?
Um, I actually was not at the meeting. I'm listed as being present, but I was not.
Are there any other corrections? And one that I'm looking for that I can't find. If anyone, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sarah Bass.
Um, I found two just little, I think just typos. Um, so in section B, the fourth paragraph, maybe? Um, it says.
Yep.
R G W. I think it just might need to be removed.
But that's the exact.
Or maybe it's supposed to be new vice chair?
Oh, um.
This Harrington made a motion for Kenny to be. New vice chair, maybe? It's R G W. I'm not sure. So, just.
Yep.
Or, or the vice, yep, there you go, also works. Um, and then in section G. Um, there was just a typo. The second sentence says McDonald. Shared that's a negotiating. It just needs another E or needs an E. And then I think, um, I think it's not that in section I, it's not that. Gifts were moved to the next meeting. I, I don't think there were any.
Right. All right, thank you. And were there any other changes or corrections that anyone had? If not, I will entertain a motion. Uh, Peter?
Move to approve the minutes of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second?
Perfect. Second. Oh, go ahead.
It's January fourth, right? January fourth, twenty twenty-two? The, the minutes.
Eighteen, um, eighteenth, actually. Here's the point.
Today's. Today's eighteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the fourth. I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion, friendly update to the motion.
Good. So if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote in opposite order this time. We'll go, uh, Steven?
Sullivan, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Peter?
Uh, Peter, I.
Irv?
Irv, I.
Allison?
McDonald, I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Sarah Bass?
Kenny, I.
Margaret?
Margaret, I.
And I, Ben, Ben, I. Alright, so moving on. Public comments. So I'm gonna, gonna try to share my screen without botching this here, so. First time. Right. Is that visible for everyone? All right. Just scroll through here.
Can it be enlarged?
I hope. Let me try.
I certainly can't read anything.
Is that too much? That's probably.
That's great.
Okay, so I will scroll down.
Um, for anyone, Jean, or anyone else who's on the call, if you double click on the image of the text, it'll, uh, it'll take up the full screen and get significantly larger. You will lose the vision, visibility of other individuals, but I think if you're trying to read it, it really helps if you double click on that.
Thanks a lot for that reminder.
No problem.
Um, can you make it a little bit smaller? Cause it's getting cut off, I think, I'm right.
Is that better there? That is clearly gonna take me some getting used to here. Do we have any members of the public here? We, as far as I understand, we do not have any voicemail. Public comments today. So if we have anyone from the public in the audience, you can raise your hand with a little, raise your hand feature and I'll call on you for public comment. So it looks like none. So, uh, as a reminder, the, the, uh, public comments are posted in the, in board docs, so you can go through and read those at a. A better pace than I scrolled through it. And also as a reminder to the public, if you wish to submit a public comment, you may do so by three P M. On the day of the meeting. And. I had the email to send. Okay, so at S C public comment dot arps dot org. Alright, so we will move on to the superintendent's update now.
Sure, thank you, and I'll be brief. I know we've got, uh, lengthy agenda. Um, so, uh, just wanna thank, I know the, all the schools did a great job in terms of, rather than the King Day celebrations, I know the middle school. Didn't do an in-person assembly like they typically would, but did, uh, really robust kind of virtual experience for the kids and then is doing more in advisory with the kickoff for Black History Month. Um, really good use of advisory time, which, um, sometimes we, you know, I get questions, why do we have advisory? And some of it's for students to feel connected with them, you know, their peers and a critical adult in the school. But also it allows us space to, to really do, uh, truly academic work in a, in a small group setting or smaller group setting, I should say, at the middle school. So, high school also has some events planned, but just want to acknowledge that. Last week, we had on Friday, a booster clinic, um, that working with the town of Amherst. So we had forty-nine students who received their booster shot. Um, twelve plus students who'd, you know, five months between their second shot and their booster. So, thank you to the town of Amherst. We, we put out information about that, about the clinics they do on Thursdays, uh, as well as opportunities. And we do have a number of students signed up on the twenty-sixth. Which is the second shot appointment for people who got their first shot on the fifth, uh, but they are allowing us fifty seats for boosters. And I think last I checked with Miss Jess Borland, I think we were up to forty of those seats taken with students, um, or community members in our schools, cause we opened that one up. So, we are trying to do our best to make accessible, um, you know, folks who are deciding now to get vaccinated as well as folks looking for booster shots. So, really appreciate the carbon collaboration. That twenty-sixth is not with the town of Amherst, that's with the state vendor that we've built a relationship with. Who actually hires some of our staff member or community members as, uh, employees, which is kinda nice to see, uh, them at those clinics. Today, the state announced, uh, the commissioner and the governor and the Department of Public Health, um, the head, uh, announced a different program starting in two weeks. Where rapid tests for families and staff who desire them would become accessible. Um, so I think the, the, my understanding at this point, although there's a webinar for me on this tomorrow, would be that they'd alternate between, um, you know, every other week. Uh, folks would get a pack of two. So the idea is that there would be enough for, um, staff members or families to be able to test, uh, one test per week with that. There's also the pool testing option that we have, and they recommended to sort of alternate the days. So no one's taking their, getting their tests on the day that they also have pool testing. So that, you know, it can work out to, um, students and faculty getting and staff getting tested twice a week, once with the PCR versus pool test from pool testing and once from, uh, the rapid test. Some other, uh, changes are aligned with that, similar to other states in our region like Connecticut, uh, Vermont and New York, which also have, um. You know, recognize that contract tracing with the quantity of cases that we have at Omicron and the fact that everyone in our district has the, at the, at this, in this district has the opportunity to be vaccinated and now pretty much boosted. Um, you know, it, it's, it's not going as smoothly as when there was, you know, twenty-five percent of the cases as compared to what we're seeing. So, um, you know, I'll find out more, you know, and I'll bring that to the next meeting, but this is, uh, it's not just an option, it's the recommendation of the Department of Public Health. Uh, we'll be connecting with the local town, um, health director on this, uh, sent her some emails and we'll be connecting this week. So, I'll be sure to share with the committee as well as the community in the Friday update, the direction that we're going in. But it does seem promising about getting more rapid tests in hands of, of families and staff, cause that's something we've, we've, we've had a little more success than most. Cause of our partnership with the town and some other matters, but we also, uh, we know that there's a finite supply. And if we're really talking about everyone having access, uh, this is a, a real difference from what our current practice has been. Think I also want to note that, uh, it came out a day early, but anyone can order up to, uh, I think it's four tests, um, uh, through the United States Postal Service. Um, that's supposed to open, it's just part of the federal program. It's supposed to open tomorrow, but it opened today. So, um, folks can get that, um, you know, uh, you know, service. And I think it, it's maybe ten to twelve days, I think it said on the website, of when they'll be delivered. But I think the idea of, um, the scarcity of rapid tests, hopefully thankfully, looks like it's headed in a, a better direction. Similarly, you know, our case count, our numbers, um, have stabilized a bit. They're still higher than they were pre-Omicron. But, you know, our case counts, when we first came back from break, resulting from break, uh, were very, very high and we're seeing them stabilize a bit, um, at the regional level. Uh, we still have more, again, we still have more cases than we did in, in the fall, there's no doubt. Um, but we saw what we're seeing at the state level, which is a big jump and we're seeing, you know, perhaps a slow decline of those cases. I saw the, before this, uh, meeting started, looked at the state numbers over the last four days. Um, you know, if you look at the seven-day average of percent positive as well as new cases, we're, we're starting to maybe see headed in, in a more positive direction. Of course, we're still at a very, very high level of new cases, but, uh, you know, it's thankful, we've had so many weeks where we were going up, up, up. Um, and seeing that turn around, uh, hopefully portends better things for later in the winter and certainly for spring. So we are keeping our eye on that. Um, last thing I want to mention is we put out some information last week as well as a video that, um, some of the staff of some of my colleagues, uh, and, and the leadership level were encouraging me to do, which is. A really simple three and a half minute video and just some of the key principles about masks, why we're encouraging and supplying high-quality respirators, uh, for masks and encouraging their use. Uh, as well as just, you know, some general advice on health and safety. So, uh, we did that both in English and in Spanish and that's, that went out. Cause we're trying to figure out as many ways as we can to communicate with different stakeholders about health and safety. So we got some positive feedback on, on that idea. I know I was speaking really fast because I was trying to get it under three minutes, just was impossible, but we, we got pretty close. Um, but we're continue to see the same trends we've seen all year, just in, in greater magnitude, which is, you know, uh, family spread and indoor unmasked, um, social, um, connection spread. It's not that it's never happening in other spaces, but I think this, the same kind of trends we've seen, we're continuing to see just in greater quantity, um, and, and, and that comes in our schools. But, you know, our staff have been, I, I can't say enough about our staff and how flexible they've, uh, they've been throughout the year, but particularly over the last couple of weeks. And, and the staff, I'm extending that to everybody, uh, who works for our district, including contracted draft, I was, staff, I was on a phone call today with, um, five-star or bus contractor. Uh, cause we have a hybrid model, we have some of our own drivers and some five-star drivers and everyone is struggling with staffing these days, but everyone is pitching in. And, you know, when they're short drivers, we're finding a way to support them. When we're short drivers, they're supporting us. And I think that, that same trend is held true on the academic side as well. So, I really want to thank folks for that. Um, this is the end of the semester, so the next two days at the regional level, um, are the, uh, especially at the high school level, uh, are where we think about finals. Uh, and then Friday is a teacher work day where people get caught up with their grading and, and Monday, we start a new semester, which at the high school level in particular, means brand-new courses for the vast majority of students in, in all areas. So, uh, we'll have an adjusted schedule so that students are able to understand their schedule and get support at the beginning of the day. And, but it's an exciting time. Uh, many students have been waiting for their electives that they were having second semester, uh, since they came back in August. And, uh, so, uh, genuine excitement about that. And at the middle school level, it's less significant change, but there still are changes, particularly in the areas of elective. So, really looking forward to that, um, topic. And that is my update. Little longer than I thought, but not, not terribly long, Mr. Harrington, or Ben.
Not too bad, not too bad. Um, yes, so are there any questions or comments for the superintendent regarding the update here? Nothing, anyone? Alright. Next topic would be the chairs update, and I have no meaningful update today, so we'll skip ahead to school committee announcements. I'll take any announcements for any school committee members. Jean?
Uh, I just wanted to, to mention the, uh, the pipe, the frozen pipe we've had at, uh, in our school. Many of you may have heard that, um, there was a pipe burst, uh, on, uh, Monday, uh, yesterday morning? No, it was Friday at about five P M. Sorry, Sunday at five P M. In the nurses, in the ceiling above the nurses', uh, room, the nurses' room was pretty much demolished. Uh, and the, the, there was significant flooding in the school. So, school's been closed, uh, all week. Uh, it may, you know, there's a slight chance we could open Friday, but, uh, no school today, tomorrow, or Thursday. And I always wanted to extend, uh, just, uh, thanks to our principal, Annie Fole Ruiz and, uh, Jen Colkeen, our superintendent, all the custodians. And a lot of people who have put a lot of hours into trying to get the school up and running. So, a stress that was unneeded, uh, during a stressful time, just wanted to share that.
Thank you, and. See Allison's here. Did, did you have something to add to that, Mike? Yep, okay, so I'll take Mike.
I just want to let folks know that I did talk to Superintendent Colkeen today about the issues at Leverett Elementary. I offered any support that we could, you know, so, we could supply. Uh, we'd be happy to help. We're, we're cognizant of it's, yes, it's not our district, but it's our families. We have many, many families who have a kid in our regional schools from Leverett and, and also a child who's in the elementary level. Um, so we had a good conversation, you know, we didn't get to anything tangible she needs at the moment, but that may shift. But I just want to let you know that, um, we're very close partners. We, we communicate often, not just on snow days, and, and she did fill me in over the weekend, but we, we talked today, we, um, and, and as that, as things evolve in Leverett, we may be seeing if we can offer support. Especially as some of our staff, I mean, it's, it's especially at the regional level, it's a quieter week with, with short days, um, today, tomorrow and, and no school on Friday. So, you know, we, we did reach, I did reach out and we did have a conversation today. And if, if there is some mutual aid that can be figured out, we'd certainly be happy to offer it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, and Allison? You're still muted. I can't hear you.
I clicked it. And then I clicked it too fast, cause it, regardless, um, the policy subcommittee is meeting on Monday, um, at six thirty and that agenda. And, um, I believe the link is also posted under meetings. So, subcommittee meetings aren't, aren't under the featured. If, if folks are looking for where these are, they're, they're just under meetings. Um, so you just scroll for the date, but January twenty-fourth at six thirty is the policy subcommittee meeting. And the negotiating subcommittee is meeting tomorrow at two and again on, um, Tuesday, um, at five.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from committee members? Alright, so we will dive into the subcommittee slash advisory committee meeting planning. Um, Mike, are you able to share that spreadsheet and go over this? So we have a few subcommittees to add members to here. So the. So we have the budget and audit subcommittee, is it? Who's on there currently is Margaret Stancer. And Margaret Stancer, apparently. Um, I was wondering, I was wondering if you'd mind kind of filling people in about what all that entails and like what kind of a time commitment, these sorts of things? We're looking at.
Um, well, uh, I would say, uh, over the past couple of years, we've met maybe once, once every couple of months. It sort of depends if there's something going on. Um, and we typically would meet with Doug, um, as the finance director. And, um. Sometimes we get presented things before they come to the full committee and if we, we can provide feedback if necessary, if we see things that we think would be help. Um, this past year, we worked on, uh, creating the, with Doug, the budget fact, um, which was something that came out of our, um, planning meeting at our retreat. Before we were started. And, um, I guess that's really kind of, it, you know, it, it's, it's some review of stuff. And then if there's some kind of thing that we want to pursue. That comes up.
Alright, so we have. Two openings. That's, yep, two openings that need to be filled. So, do we have any volunteers? I see a raised hand by Irv Rhodes. So you're, you are interested?
Definitely.
Perfect. That's one. We have one more. Get to hang out with Doug every once in a while and talk money. That's, that's always fun. Allison? So we have Allison, Irv and Margaret. Alright, so then we have the policy subcommittee. We have. One opening, assuming that Allison, Steven and Peter still want to serve on the sub, policy subcommittee.
I can give a brief explanation of it. Um, uh, and if there's others that would like to join, I would, I would happily step down. I think, like, I don't want to be on too, too busy subcommittees. Um, but, uh, so, you know, nobody, I, I will take whichever one doesn't have full participation, um, in it. But, um, the policy subcommittee does meet, um, once a month. Um, it's, we're pretty good at sticking to one hour. Um, so we work through our agenda and, um, and then whatever we don't get to, we either, um, push off or we delegate to, um, do some work in between, um, the meetings. Um, not, not heavy lift in between meetings either, I don't think, though, I, you know, maybe Mr. Demling would, would disagree, who he just joined. Um, it would be helpful to have more, um, folks from multiple towns, um, particularly from Pelham and Amherst. Because typically when, um, uh, the, the region, so this subcommittee, um, drafts and proposes, uh, you know, mixed recommend, brings policy to the full regional school committee. When the regional school committee votes on it, um, it generally applies to the Pelham School District as well as the Amherst Elementary School District. Um, so it's helpful to have those voices there, um, as, so as a liaison to those committees, um, for, for those committees to take them up, should they choose to. Um, alternatively, sometimes policy is written in one of those districts. And so that's helpful to have a liaison back into the policy subcommittee to bring that to, for consideration in the region as well. Um. That was helpful. So yes, um. I would gladly, um, give up my seat on that committee.
Do we have any volunteers for the policy subcommittee? Go, Jennifer? On board?
Yeah, I volunteer.
Good. Any other takers? Sarah Bass? And Peter? Two, one, two. And, uh. Was there anyone else that's on the subcommittee that's still interested in serving? Three, so Steven Sullivan isn't. So that's four total, right? That's, you have the. Alright, uh, did you have, you have a question or comment, Peter? Or are you just still volunteering? It's perfect, perfect. Alright, oh, go ahead, Allison.
Oh, um, it would be helpful, uh, to at least name a temporary chair, um, for the, so the policy subcommittee can decide on a chair at their first meeting. Because, as we learned before, unless we, the chair needs to call the meeting, and if there's no chair, there's no meeting.
Fair enough. Are there, uh?
I nominate Deb, cause she's not here.
Uh, Jennifer?
I, I can be temporary chair, except Allison, did you say there is already a meeting on January twenty-fourth? And will that meeting still go forward or?
Yes, there, there is a meeting on the twenty-fourth, um, and it's already posted. So the.
So the Chair really just has to call the meeting to order and maybe reorganize.
Okay, I can volunteer to do that.
So for the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, would Gene or Stephen like to give a quick overview for that?
Yeah, I'm brand new, so I'm all ears. So this is the one committee that really needs, that we felt when we redid it, that we need one member from each community. Because this is when we look at how we're gonna score the Superintendent on his, on his job performance. And at this point, the, the the main, the main frame for this is done. It just, if we want to tweak the questions a little bit each year to, you know, what we're, what we're looking for. Otherwise, the bulwark's been done already. But this is the one committee we really do feel like we need one rep from each town.
So we have Jennifer and Irv both interested. Do you have anyone else? Margaret? So out of curiosity, do we, do we have to vote if there's, there are more than three volunteers or do we just take all three, all four, I mean? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry, my bad.
So just the only caution is that if you have a five-member Subcommittee, it's now a quorum of the full committee. And so in the past, it's, I think, behooved the committee to not have quorums of the full body meeting in subcommittees.
So we are maxed out at four? That's not how that works? All right, so to recap, we have Stephen, Jennifer, Margaret, Irv. Is that accurate? Oh, Gene, right, still, still interested?
Well, volunteered and I've never gone to, I don't think we've had a meeting, so.
Right.
I'll go to a meeting, I'll, I'm there if I'm needed or wanted.
So my question is, if it's, if it's most beneficial to have folks from different towns, do we have to have our two, decide between the two Amherst reps? Is that how this would work or? Looking for help here, does, Mike, do you have?
Yes, I think, I think that's right. I think that's an accurate read of the situation. I think, I think Steve has repeated a request that's come multiple times to make sure that all four towns are represented on this committee. It's an awkward one, I don't, way too much, I'm right, it's my valuation. I don't want to make it be funny about it, but I think Steve's suggestion is a good one. I think, I think, I think that's right. And someone who's not me will have to make that other decision you talked about.
So I'll go, we'll go in order. I didn't see who raised their hand first. Who's, was it Jennifer first? Anybody?
I think Margaret's hand is up. I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Margaret, were you still volunteering or?
I'm still volunteering. I didn't take my hand down, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. So was there, I think the best way to handle this, did I see Jennifer's hand first or Irv's first? Anyone else catch that or?
I have a certain number of fingers behind my back and the one who can get.
That's about what I was looking for. Go, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I mean, just one suggestion, if, you know, the way you can handle this, we could just discuss if anybody wants to comment or not. And then we could just, we could do what we did, the reorgs, which is just go and say who you, who you prefer.
Yeah.
Prefer, but select.
Right, it'd be out of the two of us. Okay, so, so yeah, I'll entertain comments now, any pro or con comments here? Go ahead, Allison.
And this isn't a pro or con, I think it's, to be, to add a little bit of clarity, I wasn't on the Evaluation Subcommittee before, but, but as a non-member, understanding the role is putting together the instrument. But the full committee evaluates, submits individual evaluation of the Superintendent. So it's not, it's not that whoever's on this committee are the only ones that are evaluating the Superintendent. Each and every one of us as members are invited, and it's our responsibility to evaluate the Superintendent. So I don't know if that, that changes. And then usually, the Chair and the Vice Chair, historically, the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Regional Committee, the full Regional Committee, will compile that, compile all the, all the data and just write a cover memo to go with that, that collection. So as Mr. Sullivan had said, this, the role of this is really pulling together the instrument based on the goals that, that the committee voted and approved at the beginning of this full year.
Go ahead, Jennifer?
I'll just say that I'm, I was particularly interested in this Subcommittee. This is an area of interest to me, just not, not specific to this, to this position. But I feel like evaluating people and their performance is just something of interest to me. It's particularly, I'm particularly interested in being involved in creating and developing the instrument, the evaluation instrument, which is why I was interested in the Subcommittee. And I think it's really important to have an instrument that evaluates, that has metrics that evaluates how well, you know, an individual has performed in their role. So this is just something that I'm personally interested in and have some experience in.
Thank you. Irv, go ahead.
You know, the reason I volunteered to be on this Subcommittee is that it's something that I'm really incredibly interested in. Not only from the point of view, point of view of being a school committee member, but one who's served in that capacity before. And as one who has also been in a position as an Assistant Superintendent. And I also look at this as being an incredible way of looking at how you develop an instrument, which is, which this one is already been, is partially done, I assume. But I would like to look at it and be able to input on it in terms of the kinds of, not only just metrics, but also how that instrument reflects the value of the school committee.
Thank you. Gene, go ahead.
I, I think I would just bow off the committee. I, I think my interest level is not as high and I was doing it, I joined the committee because I thought we needed a member on the committee. And it's, I'd rather Irv and Jennifer be on the committee because they have some expertise and some high interest. And I, I don't think it's that important to have different people from different towns on this committee. We're all going to have a voice in the evaluation. And the instrument seems to be in place. So if you accept my bowing out, then it solves the problem.
Thank you, thank you. Peter?
Yeah, just to put a final point on what Gene said, if I recall correctly, what's happened in the past is that the the Subcommittee will put together the instrument. Any changes though, or suggestions for changes get brought before the whole committee, talk about them. We actually vote the instrument. So there's, there's multiple meetings at which every single member has input. There, there isn't any like, you know, decision-making that happens outside of the whole committee meeting happening, so. And it's ironic because we've had a lot of trouble getting people on this committee in the past. Although I will say that the work that's been done has been very fruitful because we did not have a very structured, defined process a number of years ago. And it's really, I think, helped in the future. So it's great that we have people that are very interested in it.
Awesome. So that worked its way out, itself out, sorry. So we will move on to the School Equity Advisory Committee. I clearly have no one to punt this one to. So the School Equity Advisory Committee is the, the new name for what was previously known as the School Equity Task Force. And we meet monthly for two hours, although there, there are work groups, working groups that we have that meet slightly more frequently. Pretty much, I'd say the, the most important things are the like the restorative justice program and the support and review of that work and working kind of hand in hand with the RJ Coordinator at the, at the high school as well as the, I forget the new name for the climate coordinator, but at the middle school as well as in terms of implementing restorative justice processes and these sorts of things. We also do a lot of review and, on the, on like the equity goals and the district's goals regarding, you know, social justice, multiculturalism, these sorts of things. And then there's an annual report that takes a, that takes a little bit of work there. And we are currently meeting on Wednesdays. I guess, I guess I'll have more of that in the, the report for that, but yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell. It's not, it's not the most demanding, I guess. But it's, to me, it's like really important work, I think, in terms of holding the region accountable and meeting the, the goals that we have set forth regarding social justice and so on and so forth. So Allison?
I just have to have a clarification because I think, well, a clarif, a comment and a question. This committee, I think, it advises the school committee on, on the goals and the progress on the goals and sort of reports back as opposed to advising directly the, the school district. So that what's in, that link links to sort of the newly updated task and expectations. Are we, and my question is, are we appointing the public members as well tonight or just the school committee representatives?
Yeah, just the school committee representatives. And then at the, the next meeting, there'd be the discussion as to who will be on as the, the public members. Still kind of waiting for a little more input, like more people to get involved, I guess. So we're there. Any volunteers for the School Equity Advisory Committee? Anyone? Go ahead, Mike.
So just because there is a separate agenda item for that later, I wonder perhaps if you would, if the committee came back to that later, they might, you know, be able to dig in a little more than kind of this kind of menu item. Let's, you know, this, so just, just a suggestion to consider so that committee members could have a little more time to process that one.
Yep, that is fair. Irv, go ahead.
I'm really torn with that, that the DEI is something that I really have focused on in the last two years. And, and I co-chair the Franklin Hampshire United Way DEI Committee. And it is something that I would love to be involved with, but I also think that I need to carefully calibrate my time and how much I would want to spend on it. But man, am I really interested in being on that committee. But I, I think I'm going to wait to see what comes up in the rest of this meeting and we get there before I jump in.
All right, fair enough. Right. So then we can move on to the contract negotiating team for APEA's three units? Currently we have, oh, wait, we already assigned that one, right? Or is that temporary that Allison was serving? I'll take it. You can go ahead, Allison.
We made a commitment to the APEA that that negotiating team would not change because we are working together with them doing the IBV, the interest-based bargaining. And that started a while ago. There are some trainings that happened and we're, we're in the middle of it. So we, we have already made a commitment that, that Subcommittee would not be altered.
Perfect. So then we can move on to the contract negotiating team for AFSMI, which is spelled wrong here. Go ahead, Sarah Bass, and then I'll take Peter.
They had a meeting last week and I stepped in, so I'm happy to continue in that role moving forward.
And Peter? Is that what you were gonna say?
No, I was gonna volunteer for it, but that's fine if you're already doing it.
Jennifer?
I just have a question because AFSMI is listed on row 11 and in row 12.
Yeah, those look like, that's definitely the typo in the description in 11.
Okay.
Yep. Then there's also a, there we go, yep, that's correct. Perfect. And then we typically don't, do we assign anyone for the APAA, the was that the Assistant Administrator of Assistance? Yep, go ahead.
So we can, that one has rarely required school committee involvement, just the nature of that negotiation. But I, I tend to think it's probably good to have someone on record because things may not always be smooth. And so, you know, I don't, I don't anticipate, this may be a Subcommittee that, that rarely or ever meets. But I think it's still better just to have somebody listed in case that scenario comes up and not have to revisit it in a hard moment.
And to give, to give input, I kind of stepped in that role last year. It's probably the easiest negotiation. Oh, go ahead, Peter.
I mean, that's a great advertisement. I'll take it. I mean, if there's anybody else.
Going once, going twice, sold to Mr. Peter Denman. And so then we have a very important here, Regional Warrant Authorization. This was formerly held by Kerry Spitzer. Oh, go ahead, Doug, there you go, that's exactly who I was looking for.
So I'll explain what this is for a moment. So each of the warrants that we have, that each of the warrants, so anytime we spend money, whether it be for, for items that we purchase or payroll that we pay, requires a warrant to be signed. And so it used to be that the full committee had to sign, or at least a quorum of the committee had to sign. The state changed the law recently and allows for a single person to sign, but then they are required at the next meeting to report on that signature. We've been fortunate the last year to move to an electronic method of signature, so this is a really moderate burden. We typically do send you the notice for signature, but we also provide you with a, a place to go and look at the full warrant if you want to go review it. But we do need someone on record and we probably need someone to, to serve as a backup in case the primary person is unavailable. Although Chair can serve in that role.
I would just add that I cannot personally do that. You have any speakers? Margaret?
I would be willing to do it, but I think there was some question because I have a family member who's, who is employed in the district that I couldn't sign the payroll warrants. Is that the case, Doug?
That, that would be correct.
Okay.
The one other thing I will add is that we can't, we technically are supposed to hold the checks until the signature is received. So we generally want people to be fairly prompt with their signature, but that's usually not a problem, especially with the electronic signature option.
Did I see a Sarah Bass hand on that?
So I my company sometimes works with the district, so I don't know if that's a good thing for me to sign either. I am happy to sign, I don't, or we can check, see if those, what those rules are, or I can be a backup.
Go ahead, Mike.
I would volunteer that just any, the perception of conflict of interest is, is going to be a problem with that one. So I appreciate the interest. I'm not trying to say no because it's great to have people to fill these roles. But I, you know, I think eliminating any potential conflict of interest, I think, is in committee members best, their best interest is not have to read through and make sure they're not signing off on something that would be a conflict. You know, because that one gets really sticky with the law and I don't want to get, you know, anyone to get caught up in that.
Irv, you have no conflicts, right? Mute, you're on mute.
I'll be more than happy to do it.
All right, so Irv Rhodes, it is. Next, we have the Clerical Merit Award Selection.
This is the most fun Subcommittee to do. You read about all these letters of recommendation or outstanding clerical folks. And the hard part is you have to clerical folks, and the hard part is you have to pick winners, but it's uh it's a pretty good deal. I I only talk about the ones that are fun and are interesting, you know, I'll leave all the other folks.
I've I've done it twice and I will vouch for uh Mike's characterization of it. It is it is fun. And when we were in person, you actually go around and and visit and deliver the award in person to the recipients, which is just delightful. Um, so it's it's a rewarding role on school committee.
Yeah, I would have a tough time not trying to select everyone as a recipient, but go ahead. Uh, Margaret?
Um, I did it once a couple of years ago. I would be happy to do it again.
And we would be happy to have you. So we have Margaret, good to go. So next we have the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Delegate. We oh, those happened at the exact same time on my screen, so I'm gonna start right at oh, start with Jennifer.
I would like to volunteer for that.
And Peter?
Yeah, same. Um, it so we have another committee that we both sit on, um that can also send a delegate. Um, so that might work itself out, but we can't ask other members of that committee if they want to right now. So in that in that, oh, there it is.
Uh, Mike?
Yes, since I can be a little more free with my words, uh what I'm hearing is there to get two school members who are interested. And if I don't hear anyone else, uh, I will make an executive decision on that one that I won't go into detail, but that uh I think folks can be happy with that we have two volunteers and two committees. That seems like a nice, the math works out nicely. Uh, we could totally bring it to the Ameris School Committee, but you know, just so people don't have to wait in suspense uh or vote or anything, I think I think we can be okay.
I think I'm okay with that. We doing a coin toss here, uh?
I think I'll I'll sort it out off camera.
Yep. And professional leave request subcommittee. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just to keep it all, you know, structural and sound. Um, so I'm I'm happy to defer to Jennifer tonight and then we'll work it out on the elsewhere.
All right. So uh moving on to the professional leave request subcommittee. That's typically the chairs. Do we have, do we add another committee member on to that? I see that there's average number is three.
I think that references um three, one from Pelham, one from Amherst, one from Regent, because I for some of the others I stripped out where there was, so there's a separate spreadsheet for that other committee. So I I like the MASC delegates, for example, said one from each committee or CES representative. So I stripped out just the focus just on the region and this one.
And I'm okay with with keeping that as the chair, if if everyone else isn't. And then anybody else chomping at the bit to jump on that one? Not so much. Move on to the collaborative representative who is currently Stephen Sullivan. And for that, we can have up to three. Is that that's accurate?
No, it's one per committee. So that's
All right. And were you volunteering?
We need every uh so it should just be one regional rep.
Yeah. All right. And so um Stephen, can you explain briefly what how much of a commitment that is, what what it
It normally needs once every three months on Wednesday night from six to nine or six, yeah, six to nine. And they're really good about sticking to those hours. And it used to be, it was amazing when we met in person because there'd be a big giant food spread before the meeting started, but that kind of hard now. You gotta make your own. But um it's it meets once every three months. They run through their their budget for the quarter or the past quarter. And then they talk about all the amazing programs that they have and what they what the collaborative offers and how different schools can, you you know, pick the parts that they need to use. And but it's it's really interesting. Um, but other than voting on the budget, there's really not much that the committee votes on.
Thank you. So so was there anybody interested, including the current rep? Anybody?
I'll I'll keep doing it if no one else wants to do it, because it it is super interesting. If someone else wanted to check it out, they certainly could.
I think people lost interest with the retraction of the dinner uh offering there. So we'll we'll move on to the uh CPAC liaison. There's also, Stephen, if you could up, did you go away? I'd like to give a little
No, I'm I'm still here, but Peter is the one that is the the strong attendee. I can I can't attend during the winter months when my hours change, so it's it I'm not a good choice for that.
Peter?
Um, this is another one where uh two committees have a rep, and I think technically I'm on that other committee. Uh, or the rep for the other committee. But basically CPAC is Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, the state mandated um subcommittee um that meets um once a month and is essentially, you know, an advocacy and and issues group for students with special needs. And we have, you know, twenty percent-ish of our students with special needs and um depending what the chair wants to focus on, um and and the committee wants to focus on and the public wants to focus on, the the focus can vary. Um, but we've done a lot of interesting work on uh inclusion over the years, on co-teaching, on the impact of the math curriculum, uh they were heavily involved in. Uh, this is where the the ADA study of our facilities and facilities in other districts came out of was a a community member uh and their their students' experience uh in the buildings. Um. So uh, yeah, a lot of your work, special ed is also very much a difficult process to navigate, particularly as your child got, you know, gets older and um and the region has a lot of complex issues with transition and becoming sixteen and becoming eighteen and twenty-two and whatnot. And so there's a lot of um parent support. Um, and at the end of every year, there's a a special ed, uh stars for special ed that tries to recognize um all the good work that our staff do and um had the opportunity to host that a couple of years. And it is um one of the most heartwarming things I think I've ever done on school committee is is to read through those descriptions of of how our staff have impacted uh our students. Going the extra mile is like a vast understatement for for our staff when it comes to these efforts. So um it's I think it's a great um aspect of our schools to engage in.
Thank you, thank you. And uh are there any volunteers?
I'm happy to keep doing it. It's just that I have a hard time during the winter months making those meetings.
Yeah, it's all the Friday mornings. Okay, so if there're no objections, I'll can add Stephen to that or keep Stephen on to that for the regional representative or liaison. All right. So the next one is the BI-PAC, LPAC liaison, meeting with the the bilingual parent advisory council from the school committee, the liaison to the bilingual parent advisory council. It's there. Do we currently don't have anyone serving in that?
I had done it um originally when it first formed, but I don't even think that they're called that anymore. I'm not sure. Um, it's a it's us like CPAC. It's a state mandated uh parent advisory council for um the mandate is for English language learners, but I think our district has has morphed it into something bigger than that. Um, but Mike, maybe you can speak to it. Because I haven't I haven't been involved um since the beginning.
Yes, now MPAC, which is multilingual, um because bilingual doesn't describe um a significant number of our families who participate in that. Um, so i- you know, it very much follows along the same lines as CPAC uh that was just recently described by Stephen and Peter. So um you know, they meet, you know, not super frequently, but multiple times a year. Um, they try to alter the meeting time so it works best for families. Um. But it's um it's a great group. Katie Richardson's the staff liaison to it. So yeah, but I I think you're I just wanted to note Allison's comment is correct. It's not it's a state organization, so we still have to sort of call it LPAC, but it's um you know, in official terms, but we locally we call it something different.
Jennifer, I assume you're volunteering?
Yes, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Perfect. So that rounds out the, well, all but one of the subcommittee assignments for us. So next on the agenda is review of the four town meeting and FY twenty-three budget. For the first half of that, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Yeah, Doug, I can just do the overview part of the meeting and then I'll turn it over to you if that's okay with the chair.
Um, yep.
So uh, you know, I think it is worth taking a couple of minutes just to review the the Forton meeting. I thought the participation of the towns was excellent. I think we heard a lot of feedback from all four towns. Um, and I think if the goal was to hear feedback, I think we did. I I wouldn't suggest that the feedback all pointed in the same direction. But that's to be expected and not novel for us, um because of the different incentives that uh and and situations each town is in. So, you know, I think, you know, what we are wanting to spend some time on tonight is um to to think through an approach as it relates to the assessment method, given the different feedback that we heard from our member towns. Um, you know, again, it wasn't uh it it was it was helpful feedback, but it wasn't uh complete feedback that gave uh from Doug and myself a clear direction on exactly what to do. You know, our next meeting will be presenting a a proposed budget with kind of more significant details as well as you know, an assessment method and, you know, an ad cut amount, usually a cut because that's an nature of our budgets. Um, but we can't do that unless we receive feedback on the from the school committee on a direction to take, given the feedback of the four towns. Um. Doug, am I missing uh critical pieces or is that that captured?
No, the preview captures it. Thank you.
Yeah. So really, it's an opportunity for school committee members to give us direction. Uh, we still have a number of variables out there. The state budget's coming out, you know, next week uh with chapter seventy and and some other factors, health insurance, hopefully we'll get more clarity next week, if not the week after, but hopefully next week. Um, those are two pretty, especially the latter of which is two pretty big driver of the budget right now. And we have an estimate, but the estimate, what we found in the past is you know, one or two percent health insurance change can is is a six-digit implication, has a six-digit implication on us. Um, but really trying to figure out uh and a next step and an approach, we 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 do want to have another Forton meeting in the month of February. Um, but we we are looking for your guidance and feedback.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, so the annual crisis, the assessment. Um, so I I think I think what's clear and not debatable is that the four towns are not in agreement about what the assessment method should be, just just to state the obvious. Um. And and I think it, you know, based on what they've expressed this meeting, the last meeting and the last at least the last three years, I was, I can't recall the details of the first time I was on, but uh so at least four years in a row. Um, there's been this general pattern of Amherst um wanting to resist increasing the percentage um that we use in our custom methodology uh what to to wanting to resist increasing statutory. Um, and um Chuttsbury wanting to drive to a hundred percent statutory as as fast as possible and Amherst pushing back and saying that's we're we're not agreeing to that. That's not the direction that we want to go. Um. Pel- Pelham, God bless John Tricky and Pelham. Pelham saying we pay our bills and we'll do what the schools need. And, you know, Leverett's somewhere in the middle. I don't have a really sharp characterization of of Leverett, all of which is to say that I think it's highly unlikely that the four towns of their own volition suddenly come to an agreement and say, oh, we want X percent statutory, X percent regional agreement, a completely different method. Therefore, I think our uh responsibility as school committee for the assessment method is is I I feel like we're in the same position as last year, which is the towns can agree. It's it's our job to pass what we think is the best consensus that treats the four towns the fairest. And barring, you know, a a tweaked argument up or down, I I think what we we had last year is is about as good as we're gonna get with sixty per- is if I'm not mistaken, sixty-five percent statutory, thirty-five percent regional agreement. So I think I think that's what we should do. And I think the principle that the committee should stand by and behind when and when proposing and eventually voting this is um, you know, is that is that we we need to do what's best for the schools and what's fairest to all all members of of all town members. As for the budget, I mean, there's a lot more I could say about the budget. I don't want to take up too much time, but I would just generally say that I I don't want to see major cuts to services. Um, you know, if if there are efficiency cuts, if there are truly enrollment-based cuts um that, you know, that you that you're you're making and can make, that's 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 fine. And I think that's actually welcome to to show continued efficiency, continued, you know, looking over to see if declining enrollment can um justify reasonably a cut. But I don't personally, so I'm just speaking one of nine here. I I I don't want to see a budget that has any significant cuts at all to services, given given the millions that we've cut in the last, you know, four or five years.
Oh, go ahead, Irv.
I I I really want to echo and support what Peter just said. I I believe that what occurred last year is something that we should do this year. Um, I also want to say is that I I would be highly resistant to any kind of budgetary cuts. Um, given what has happened in the past in terms of cuts, I just do not see that we should be doing that unless the administration can say, hey, look, these these cuts are uh don't hurt us in in any kind of way. Uh, that's the only way I would be a supporter, supportive. But otherwise, what I've seen, what what I have seen in terms of the budget presentation so far, I am incredibly impressed with and really want to go forward with that budget as presented.
Allison?
Yeah, I think I want to just e- echo um the sentiment that I'm hearing from um Peter and Irv also on the and and the sense of efficiencies. And I I, you know, heard wasn't able to attend the four towns, but I've um watched and um talked to folks after that um on the town council. Um, but I I think that it's a it's a dangerous area for us to be talking about. I mean, I think, you know, that we've been able to make cuts over the years, the million with the maybe the exception of a little bit of last year's uh cuts or this year's the current budget. But we've been able to make those cuts without um significant impact on the student experience and the student um student education program. And that comes, that's efficiency cuts, right? Like that's that's how we've been able to get to where we are and not sort of have a dramatic impact, um negative impact on the student experience. Um, and some of the things that we've talked about at this committee relate to some of those services and supports um and capacity that we've cut um to get here and that we're feeling the brunt of tho- that lack of capacity. So at a recent, one of our recent ones of these meetings, we talked about um, we we don't have an analyst. We don't have budget analysts to help um to to build that capacity for answering all the great questions that um that our community is asking, that our municipal colleagues are asking, that we're asking. Um, you know, to be able to demonstrate that story. Doug's team just doesn't have that kind of capacity to do that for three towns. I mean, three districts, right? Um, we've talked about sort of the challenges in 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 the website and um communication and you know, communication with the community and sort of the ease of navigation of finding information. We've talked about marketing. Those are all um roles that people are taking care of on top of a full workload of 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 other roles and responsibilities. And that's and we we do that because in the name of efficiency and wanting to protect the student experience. So um you you know, at the risk of sounding stubborn, I'm I'm tired of hearing people ask us to look for more efficiencies because we've been scraping away every last bit of any in any semblance of inefficiency over the last few years. Um, and Um, and, you know, are there other ways that we can be delivering student services that might shave some money here or there? Possibly. There's always room for improvement, right? There's always room for change, but, uh, you know, and the level of changing, making dramatic cuts again, um, I just don't think in, in this year, when what our students and our staff need is more supports. Um, and, um, coming out of and emerging from a pandemic like this, it, it's just the wrong time for us to be looking for more, if it, more efficiencies to shave. Um, and I think, you know, one of the other things too, that I talked about, I, we, we is glad to see that the enrollment information, um, Doug, that you shared and incorporated into that, because I think that's also important to see because I, you know, when, when our town Amerist talks a lot about, um, you know, subsidizing other, other towns. And, um, you know, I think what, what that drives home is yes, there's a lot of students, you know, Amerist has the majority of students. And yet if, if the, the, the diversity, the ability that we have to be a, to offer the kinds of diversity of programming and educational supports and services and, and program, um, opportunities for our students is only because we have that number of students, that 20% of students. If we were not a regional school, we wouldn't be able to do, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the kinds of student supports as student opportunities in terms of educational program that we do today. And I think we need to continue to drive that home that the sum of the whole, the sum of these four towns is much greater. You know, that total is much greater than just adding the individual students and sort of just drawing that line, um, down. Because I think, um, every one of our students benefits from being in a regional district in ways that you can't sort of define by simply drive, you know, cutting it and saying, okay, well, we have 60% of the students, so we're going to pay 60% of the cost because the benefit we get from being part of the region is so much more than that. Um, so I, I, the long-winded response for saying I, I share that sentiment of not interested in seeing cuts that we, um, would make, that we would not make because of a decline enrollment or shift in, in, um, you know, uh, you know, attrition or anything's naturally that where we would naturally look to save money because of, um, circumstances. But to go beyond that, I mean, not supportive of that.
Yep. Go ahead, Erv.
You know, one of the things that, um, would be helpful as we go down this road uh, is to see how, um, the application of temporary money, i.e. ARPA, ESER, uh, is going to be applied to the budget and what areas is going to be applied to, et cetera. Um, uh, just so that we, we can then have a fuller picture of how funds are going to be expended and, and on what. Um, just to have, uh, you know, a solid picture going forward. And also that, uh, we would have as information as, as people in the public begins to ask more pointed questions.
Are there any other comments, questions, concerns, et cetera? Oh, go ahead. Uh, I'll take Steven and then Margaret.
So if we need someone to cry about cuts we've made in the past, I'll volunteer again because when we cut the foods program, it was the most oversubscribed elective we had at 72 seats per semester. And then it turns out when we cut the preschool program, that that was also a VOTEC type, um, program. Because I've learned since we cut it, that there were a large number of students that have gone through that, that used it as a springboard to work in daycares and preschools, either as a, um, job going through, uh, job in college or as a vocation. And that was one of the things last summer, when the students filled out the, um, survey, that they wanted more, more things done for students that were not on the college path. And if, so if we need someone to cry and talk about those, I'm happy to do it.
I appreciate that, Stephen. Uh, Margaret?
Um, I, I'm not going to elaborate because everybody that's already spoken has said the things that need to be said. I just want to say that I also am in support of not cutting this year. I, we have done so much of it already. Um, and I, I think we have to hold the ground for the students and the staff.
Uh, Sarah Bass.
I'm going to follow suit with, uh, Margaret and say, everybody else has done an excellent job. Um, talking about the budget and, and I fully support everybody that's spoken.
And I'll just add my two cents in regard to cuts that, that I just, I just want to point out the, uh, the fact that we have such an excellent school system is because of the dedicated folks who work in our school system and, and we absolutely can't afford to lose folks. I, I, I think in terms of cuts, we're like getting dangerously close to nicking the bone at this point. So that's really all I have on that.
And I'll take Peter.
Yeah. I mean, so that's exactly what I was going to say is that, you know, we've, you know, on more than 2 million of cuts in the last five years, you know, we've, the efficiencies have, they have been realized and not that, you know, there can't be tweaks going forward, but you know, we've, we've cut to the bone. Any further is through the bone, right? We, we would be talking about like slashing electives. We were talking about increasing class sizes. We, we, we talking about taking away supports that we've, academic and emotional support we've had for years. We're talking about, you know, increasing fees, um, you know, uh, changing our philosophy of transportation fees and, and, and who we give transportation, transportation to, a, a whole host of things. Um, so yes, um, so plus one, plus, plus 100 to that. Um, uh, so, but Dr. Marson, um, and, uh, Dr. Slaughter, I just want to follow up real quick on the assessment method. Sometimes after these, um, robust four towns meetings, some municipal officials will reach out to you or to Dr. Slaughter and, and give a sense of like, of, of, of where they would act, where there's some actual consensus or compromise room. So in, in terms of assessment, if they did, did any of that transpire that, that might be helpful to, um, arriving at a, a, a detailed, um, decision?
Uh, Doug, you can share if anyone reached out to you. No one reached out to me.
No one's reached out to me either at this point.
So, um, can I see if I can summarize the feedback that I've heard so far, just to make sure it's consistent? So what I've heard from the committee tonight is a strong interest in not making cuts beyond efficiencies that may be able to be realized based on declining enrollment or other matters like that. Um, and so I think what Dr. Slaughter and I will do is get to work on what that looks like under different assessment methodologies, looking to, uh, also looking at topics we're coming up in a meeting, but, uh, as our funds and other funds that may supplement our budget, particularly for next year to make that more possible. Uh, and that's what we'll bring back to you. Is that a fair summary of, uh, what, what we've heard from the committee tonight?
Looks like a lot of agreeable head nods there. Erv?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, uh, Mike and Doug. And the, uh, only thing that I would really want to see is that, um, the ARPA and ESER money be, when it's expended, be expended as on temporary things, one time expenditures, not something that would, um, you know, going forward and, uh, would have to look at, uh, replacing for next year or the year after.
Thank you.
Got it.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who hasn't gone that has something to add here or can you move? All right. So in the packet, so, so to preface this, uh, Allison and Margaret had worked on a, uh, and I, I, I don't want to call it a survey, but it's somewhat of a survey, I guess. I feel like we have way too many surveys. But, um, if, if one or both of you could go ahead and set this up and explain this, is there someone who can share this too, by the way?
I would say it's, it's not a survey. Um, and I think, uh, it's, uh, you know, it, it looks like that it's a form. Um, and, and this came out of, um, the, in the fall, uh, conversations that we had as a committee about wanting to enable other ways for people to provide input to the budget process that weren't able to attend, um, the forums that we, the forum that we had, um, and not make that the only way that people could provide input. Um, so, um, it, you know, we always accept public comment. We always accept email. Um, so the suggestion had come to create maybe a form, um, and with specific questions that would help us, um, in, in sort of just understanding for the people who choose to do this. And it's not intended to be a representative survey, but if somebody wants to share an input into the process, it's, it's sort of questions that we might find helpful to hear, um, and to provide context for what their comment, what their open-ended comments might be. Margaret, sorry.
You're muted?
I also went away. Um, thank you, Allison. Um, I guess the only thing I would add are, um, we're sort of running up against time here, so I would, would like feedback from the committee about whether you think this is a good idea. Um, and if you do, if you have any suggestions, um, changes, additions to this. Um, but I think if we're going to do it, we need to move on it pretty quickly if we got to get the feedback in time.
Jean, go ahead.
Uh, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good idea and looking at the form itself, it just, the, the grid section and then, uh, number four after it. I, I had the feeling, well, it seems very repetitive. I mean, it's kind of like you've asked for it, the same answers in a grid. And then you've asked people to prioritize a little bit, um, in this list. And it seems, I mean, if I were answering that grid, it would be very hard to put anything in, in the right-hand column. As a parent or as a community member, it's just, you want all those things. So I think for me, it would be a little more helpful to say if, something like, if you had to, had to cut or really decrease funds in three areas, what would you, what would you do? And if you, and if you had to really choose three areas that you would absolutely not sacrifice, which would you choose? I mean, if you, if we're trying to get a feeling for, for, if there are real strong priorities, because if I were filling that format, I put everything in the first two, in the left and center grid. And I'm not sure how much valuable information you'll get from that.
Thank you. Erv, go ahead.
I, I looked at this and I went over multiple times and I, I just have the feeling that, um, we're, well, let me preface this way. This year, the past two years, um, the schools and the communities have been under enormous kinds of pressures, especially in relationship to COVID. Parents, teachers, students, et cetera. And for me to, if, if we were going to send this out to parents, students and the general community, I, I would want to send it out in a, you know, maybe in, uh, in, in a different form and ask questions in a different way. And also to look at, uh, some, um, preamble kinds of questions that would get at the satisfaction of parents, students and, uh, the community with our schools, with our administration, with the school committee, et cetera. Uh, and, and, and also get at some things related to their feelings. They're, you know, something that would tap into the incredible amount of emotional, uh, energy, uh, that, that has been impacted by COVID. That's one. And two is that I, I would, uh, like to, I, I guess I, when I, when I, when I look at this, I, I would want it to be more aspirational than it is. And, and, and I guess I, 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 if I were going to be doing this, I would just do it in a different way. Ask the questions in a different way, uh, because this is boiling it down to just the budget and in terms of parents or the, uh, the, the school community, um, making choices uh, with really, uh, not a lot of, uh, information in terms of what is available, in terms of money, et cetera. So I want to know, I would want to know, hey, what, how do you feel about us? When I say us, the administration, the school committee, the teachers, et cetera, and some satisfaction kind of a survey at, at the beginning. And then, uh, go into, hey, uh, uh, some budget kinds of questions that would allow us to determine where, uh, the school community is, uh, and how the school committee is thinking in terms of how we spend our dollars.
Thank you, Erv. Uh, Jen, Jennifer, sorry.
So, um, I would look at a form like this as a way of getting qualitative information and input from people. Um, kind of like a, like a focus group, but like through a form, I suppose in person. I, I'm a little, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the table and the elements in the table, um, because it feels like, it feels like, it, in looking at this, it feels like these are the things we're considering cutting, put them in order for us. When really like, we're not going to cut the family center. We're not going to cut resort, you know, we're not going to cut teacher pay. Like if, 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 this list is a little bit arbitrary and it makes it sound like here are things we're considering cutting. Tell us how you would rank them. Um, so I don't, I don't really think, I, I mean, unless we, unless we can list like every element of our budget, I don't think a table is going to be very useful or having people rank elements is going to be very useful. Um, I would like to keep it to open-ended questions and, and maybe just a few open-ended questions, maybe the most important one of which is, what ideas do you have for ways we could cut the budget in a way that minimizes impact on students or something like that? Like I think we should, we could keep it really short and open-ended. Um, as opposed to having people rank things. Um, because I think that, uh, I, I know we feel frustrated when we propose cutting something and then we hear from people who really object to us cutting it and then we want, uh, but, but I feel like community members have a right to say to us, don't cut anything. I want to keep everything. I don't think it's the job of the community to tell us where we should make, to, to cut, to come up with ideas for making budget cuts, even though I just said we, we could ask people. I, I, I feel like that's our job. Our job is to figure out if cuts are needed, how to do them in a way that minimizes impact on students. I don't, I don't, that's not something that I want necessarily to, um, to force people to tell us by ordering, by ordering, um, a, a list. I don't know if I'm expressing myself very well. I do think that there might be some ideas out there amongst, particularly amongst educators, but also families assist, you know, creative ways to, to make budget cuts. But I don't really feel the need to like ask people to prioritize things because I feel like everything's important. It would be, it would be really hard, as someone said, to put any of these items in that last column. Um, and lastly, I think it's really important that this, if we do send this form out, that it be completely anonymous, that people, uh, are able to fill it out without giving any information, not even their email address. Um, to just to have it be completely anonymous. And I know there were some concerns about not allowing people to submit it more than once. And that's why we require email address, I think I heard. But I don't think that's a concern we need to have, that people are going to submit it multiple times. And so we need to try to limit that. I think we just make it completely anonymous and that will, and that will give us some better information, in my opinion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other input on this? Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah. Um, so I, I agree with a lot of what Jennifer said. I think generally speaking, um, unless we're going to work up extremely robust, um, instrument, uh, where we can rely on quantitative results, which, which this is not, and it's not intended to be. Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a qualitative, um, um, addition that helps, helps give another flavor, another, another avenue of input. So I, and, and generally speaking, I, I like, I like shorter surveys. I think just, it's like people are, it's the middle of the winter, it's COVID, people are tired. Um, you know, the, the shorter the survey, the more likely it is to be completed. Um, uh, you know, I mean, I think You know, I mean, I think if people have concerns about prioritization and ranking, you know, I'm, I'm, I think it's fine to leave that out. It's, it's not like we're going to take it and, and, and use that to, to cut any, and given the conversation we just had, we're not, I didn't hear any support for cuts anyway, so. Um, I, some of the questions I did like on this, that, that um, I, I would be really interested to hear from a qualitative point of view are number nine, what motivates you to participate in the regional school budget process? We make a lot of assumptions about why people pay attention, but you know, this might be really revealing. What areas of the budget would you like more information about? Uh, where do you think, I think some general question that's some prompting question of, you know, what, what do you value in the schools? You know, what, what are you concerned about? Something like that. Not necessarily what would you add or what would you cut, but you know, just some sort of general like sort of values kind of statement and uh, I, I think it's probably going to be the most useful, given the, given the time constraints. Um, and also in the context of the, the committee's position on a fully funded budget that we just articulated.
Thank you. Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Um, so listening to everybody, um, great ideas, but I wonder if this maybe is not the time to do this, that this is something that we ought to put off and think about next year or when we have time to really consider all the things that people have contributed to the conversation, because I don't see how we can pull all that together now and get this out in a way that's going to be useful for our budget planning. And also, you know, as several people said, in light of the conversation we just had um, and how people are feeling, you know, I, I think when we started this, one of the things was to get some idea of where people, to prioritize things so we could understand what was important to people and if we were going to have to be dealing with cuts, you know, how people felt about that. So I, I think maybe this is not the time. Allison? You have any thoughts?
I was thinking the same thing. Um, I will say, I think it, it is data to the question about sort of everybody wants to prioritize everything. That's data, right? I mean, we, we think that, right? It's not a question of like forcing, you know, folks to choose one that they would cut. I think it's really sort of you know, we don't know what we don't know. I mean, um, so I, data is data, right? If somebody, if somebody doesn't says all of these things are critically important and essential to the functioning of our district, that's information, right? Uh, and I, and I think it's also sort of, um, if it comes to that and, and we're struggling with, with having to make choices about sort of increasing here or increasing there, or decreasing here or decreasing there. It, it's hard to know in the moment what's going to have the biggest, nobody wants that, right? None of us want it. We've already said we don't want to make any cuts. Um, and nobody in our communities want that either. And if it comes to that, that we have to make those kinds of decisions, we can't read the public's mind. And so this is, this, you know, figuring out a way to be able to get that information before the budget hearing, because at that point the, the trains almost left the station at that point for making major changes to how we're building the budget. Um, but all of that said, I do agree, I think that lots of really thoughtful input. Um, this was something that got started and was proposed um, by prior uh, school committee members and sort of something that we wanted to sort of explore, but I think with all the rich conversation and input here, that it's worth sort of tabling for now. Um, and just making sure that we're, you know, beating the drum pretty regularly and steadily to, with our um, communities that email us, please, and public comment um, as a way for us to get that qualitative input in terms of budget priorities um, and, and needs. That's my, my thought.
Go ahead, Jean.
And I, I would just state, I think the obvious that, you know, we do, we represent uh, the public and the families and the students. Uh, and, you know, we, I think school committees need the input of the public. We can make decisions, but I don't think we should be making them um, in a void. And I think that, that sometimes happens. So the more we, the more data we can collect, you know, I think it, it behooves us to do that, because, because I do think we should take into account what the public values. That's part of our job. I, I do think we also, some of us are educators, we have our own opinions and we try to be thoughtful about it, but we represent the community.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Irv.
At, at some point, and, and the schools, this, this school committee and Amherst School Committee, we really need to do a survey of the, of the community. And by that, I mean a representative, random, randomized survey of the school committee, of the, of the school community. So that we can get a sense of what they really want or thinking about, have issues with, et cetera. I don't know when the last time, uh, and maybe people here can tell me, when there was such a general survey of the school community to get at those kinds of things. We have sitting over here and Hadley, the Donahue Institute. Uh, we, we have a former member of the school committee who was a member of that Donahue, Carrie. Uh, I have dealt with the Donahue Institute and there are remarkable remarkably skilled group of people. And we should tap into that. Uh, but we, we, we need to have that survey done. And, and, and the sooner the better. It might not or uh, to get us through this budget, but at some point it needs to be done. We're, we're operating in a really vacuum. We all have these assumptions about what the school committee thinks, but we really don't know. We need to stop.
Thank you, Irv. I just wanted to thank Allison and Margaret for your, your work on this. This is the, it's very important to me to get as much input from the community as humanly possible and, and kind of get the uh, kind of get the barometer, if you will, as, as to what people actually do find to be valuable to them. Like, I'm a firm believer that it's a moral document, so I'd like to make sure that I'm aligned with our community's morals in terms of education here. So if there are no further questions or comments on this subject, I would like to move, there, there's um, line E regarding the track and field project. Oh, we have Doug here, like to have an efficient use of his time. There are no objections. I'd like to move that up to next on the agenda. Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just wanted to ask if we could, after the track and field update, could we take a five-minute break? Just put planting that seed.
I think I'm momentable to that. Yeah. A little leg stretching going on. All right. Does get some, some head nod shakes, et cetera, thumbs up, thumbs down sideways. Good. Yeah, so we will do that then. So I'm moving the wrong mouse. We will, I will hand it over to Doug for the track and field renovation presentation here.
And I think I'll, I'll just do a little intro and Doug, uh, if you'd like me to present the two slides, I can, or if you want to do it from your office, um, whatever's easier for you.
Um, if you could present, that'd be great, but it, go ahead and queue it up if you want.
Yeah, I'll do that in a second. So I just wanted to frame this. I think some of the public comments talked about the long history of this, and, and so I do want to stress that that this is not a new conversation. Uh, it's, it's been a lengthy conversation and and one that for a whole variety of reasons, there haven't been actions taken on. Uh, but I'm going to restate what I said at the four-town meeting is that attracts an incredibly poor condition. Um, we have neutral third-party officials who have told us they don't feel like it's safe to have competitions on our track. They questioned about the practice, uh, practicing, especially for some of the field events and some other areas. Uh, and we have a field that um, doesn't support our student athletes in the way that we'd wanted to. Uh, you know, we have to, you know, I think as noted in some of the public comments, uh, you know, we have to play away games, even if they're home games plenty of times, because the field condition gets so poor. And it, it's a long-term problem and, you know, I think we do need to develop a solution. Uh, you know, we put out three options and I'll bring up the slides in a second, Doug can go over those. Uh, but I think it, we do need to really think through the long-term implications of, of each of those potential solutions, because doing nothing will further exacerbate an existing issue and any of the solutions aren't overnight solutions. Even if magically money appeared tomorrow, uh, there's a lot of work that would need to go into this and it's a multi-year project, so. You know, I think we're feeling some urgency. I think the urgency from the community here tonight is something I hear on a regular basis when I talk to high school students, um, coaches and athletic directors and, and coaches um, about the condition and, you know, pre-pandemic meant, some of you may remember, some of you are on the committee, where we had many, many people in live meeting, um, talking about the condition of, you know, that it wasn't safe at that point. And we've made some improvements since then, but the field, you know, there was concerns from the soccer coach, soccer players, field hockey players. Uh, it ran the gamut, so you know, I think we've paused, you know, the, the you know, during the beginning of the pandemic where the fields weren't used much, there was, we did some work, we put some work in irrigation that has temporarily improved the condition of the fields, but the, there's long-term issues uh, that will not solve themselves without action uh, from the town. So with that lovely introduction, uh, optimistic, right? Uh, I'll turn it over to Dr. Slaughter and I will uh, present those two slides, so you can have a sense of, of where we are. And I, I may not be able to hold off jumping in, Doug, so I apologize in advance if that's the case.
That's, that's quite a right. So uh, we went over these last Saturday briefly before we went to the four towns meeting, but, but I think I wanted to kind of go back through them a little bit with you and just sort of reorient you, and then for the broader public that might be watching this meeting that may not have too did to the, to the uh, to the, to the four towns meeting. Um, the, the short story is that, that, you know, the track is desperately in need of, of resurfacing. Uh, the interior field has some, some needs as well. There's really sort of three options we've, we've looked at in, in, in some depth here. Uh, one of which would be to, you know, sort of replace the track where it is and largely keep it uh, you know, oriented the way it is, as well as uh, the size it is. Uh, that's the least expensive option. It has a number of drawbacks to it in some respects. Um, the other two options both involve rotating the track uh, essentially ninety degrees to a north-south orientation. With different surfaces for the, for the field in, in the interior, uh, whether it be a natural surface of grass or a synthetic surface. Um, and so there are different price tags that come with those. Excuse me. Uh, the advantage of a north-south orientation is for those playing on the fields interior to the track, you get a, you, you get a, an appropriate orientation. You, you don't have a goalie that's staring into the sun. In, and you also, with that orientation, we'd have the opportunity to sort of make the, the field the proper size to meet the, the recommendations of the MIAA for, for the fields that would be interior to that, to have appropriate um, out-of-bound space and, and safety space uh, on those fields. So that's another advantage of that, of that rotation uh, of the track, although it's, it's a, it's a decidedly more expensive project when you do that. If we're to take those three uh, options and sort of look at, we've gotten some, some estimates for, for what those would cost. Uh, roughly one point two million dollars for the, just the resurfacing of the track. Uh, there's some additional work that has to be done, partly due to its age and partly just some safety things that we need to attend to. Uh, and so that's part of why that number, uh, with the other two orientations, it's about three point six, six million and four point six, five million, uh, depending on the interior surface. And so that, you know, if we were to just apportion that based on, on our, our typical capital uh, uh, allocation method that we have in our regional agreement, the, the numbers that you see at the bottom of the slide there uh, demonstrate those, those breakdowns as far as raw cost, it doesn't have the, uh, those have the, the, just the raw cost, it wouldn't be something we do in a single year, we'd probably bond that, so there'd be uh, additional uh, additional interest charges in, in that as well. But it also, you know, the, the question's been raised is, is, is whether or not that's the, the right method, because the, the and the right way to sort of share the cost, because the, the fields do sit within the confines of Amherst proper. Um, and so there are, you know, it's proximity to the downtown in Amherst and, and otherwise just make it a bit of more of a community resource for Amherst. And so uh, you know, another option or a suggestion would be that Amherst pay a, a little larger share to uh, accommodate the fact that it has that, that additional resource in, in the community. And so a suggestion I had uh, was to, and if you switch the other slide there, please, Mike, um, was to kind of split the costs out. The other thing that I'll point out is that some of the, some of, but not all of uh, the costs are eligible for CPA, Community Preservation Act monies. And so that's a, you know, just a refreshing people's minds, if they're not familiar with Community Preservation Act, it's a, it's a separate assessment on your tax bill that is distinct from the regular property tax. Um, and it is especially for specific purposes, there are four purposes, uh, historical preservation, uh, open space and recreate, and open space recreation. And now I'm drawing a blank on the fourth one, I can't remember now. Um, but unfortunately, so uh, what, what's nice about using CPA money is that there are some state funds that come with it. So uh, when you have CPA funds available and you utilize those, some of those funds that are available are state, state funds. So it lowers the burden on the local taxpayer to uh, to pay for things with, with CPA funds. Uh, not everything is eligible for that. And so uh, the idea that was proposed at, at the meeting last, last Saturday was uh, not last Saturday, Saturday before last, was that we could potentially split the cost kind of a third, a third and a third. And so one-third would be the town of Amherst. Just as a, as a response to their having the property kind of within the confines of the town. A third could be funded by CPA and a third could be funded by the regional uh, uh, schools and through the irregular assessment method. And for the CPA, the suggestion was, is that the, the amount charged to CPA or recommended for charge to the CPA would be apportioned in the same way as the regional agreement. So whether a town decided to use CPA dollars or not, uh, their piece would be, would be based on the, the regional agreement method, which involves utilizing what's called the uh, EQV or equalized valuation for properties within the communities, which is how we, we distribute capital costs currently. There are a number of questions that are still out there and that will come up with this project. You know, I think the, the urgency is clear, the amount of, of need is there. Uh, I think it's, and you know, it's a variety of things that we're going to have to address here fairly soon to, to answer the question of, of what we want to do and how we want to approach this. We're still working with uh, the, the company that did the larger uh, master planning process with the town of Amherst and the regional schools relative to recreation space within the center of Amherst, which includes the regional school fields as well as, as those that are owned by the town. Uh, it's a company called Weston Sampson, where, where we've engaged with them again to do some additional work, which is where these most recent numbers have come from. Uh, we're working with them to, to do some more final uh, analysis and get some more information. So there are a lot of open questions around. So operating costs. So for example, if you have a grass, uh, natural grass uh, interior to your field, what is the amount of playable hours on it? How much does it cost to maintain that field? How much rest does it need? Uh, those sort of things. Uh, if you have an artificial surface, uh, it's clear from this that obviously it's a more expensive upfront cost. What are those operational costs? Because there is some maintenance to those fields, they're not, they're not without maintenance, so there's some maintenance costs there. Uh, I think there are questions that come up with artificial services around um, environmental and, and personal safety and, and impacts of, of the materials that are used. Uh, some of those questions are ones that, that we'll need to have uh, answers to and be ready to address for the community at large as they think about those. And so, you know, it's, it's not a purely economic decision. Uh, it has, you know, a lot of implications, uh, future implications as far as costs are concerned and, and concerns that people will raise, and rightly so, around, around other questions that are, are not explicitly you know, financial. But I wanted to lay those out for you again and, and the larger public. I mean, I think that, that uh, you know, the, the short story is action is needed. We, we have a field and, and a track that are in desperate need of, of, of work. One other thing I'll note with the reorientation, one of the advantages is that the other spaces around that become much more able to be utilized uh, and more efficiently utilized. Uh, so it makes the other spaces that we have around that track uh, also more useful to us, uh, because it'll be a more thoughtful implementation of, of uh, fields within the space that we have available. You know, uh, so I think I'll stop there and, and sort of see what questions anyone has. I know that when I mentioned this on Saturday, it's been a week and a half since we did that. I haven't heard from the community, you know, I haven't heard from the I haven't heard from the community, you know, I haven't heard from the four towns. No one's called me up and said that's the most absurd thing I've ever heard of. So that's good news. But I do think that, that, you know, I will be getting and we will get some more information relative to, to people's opinion about this. I will say I met with some, some folks in the town of Amherst and, and we discussed some options. I think that there is going to be some potential fundraising that, that is going to, you know, get started. I think there are a lot of people that are interested both in the youth level and, and also at the, at the sort of regional schools level to support fields and, and changes. And might be willing to support separate from tax dollars, you know, some of the funding for this project. But, but I think we have to at least start with the, with the idea that that would be nice, but not necessarily a likely thing to happen. Or we, we don't know what level of support that might happen, but you may start to see, you know, some groups within the community start to, to activate around trying to, to do some fundraising. Which would be welcome and we can, you know, we'd be happy to, to take that, you know, sort of resource and, and, and utilize that to help work on this project. So I think I'll stop there and let you guys ask questions or, or sort of see what, what thinking you guys have had since we just first initially sort of presented this to you.
All right, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, it's more of a, a comment than a question. For those who don't know, when we talk about the north-south orientation, it, it's not just about keeping the sun out of one of the goalie's eyes to make it fair. It's actually where it would go would be along the bank, that's that small parking lot behind the gym where, where Summit Academy and I believe enters and exits the building, because that would allow us to put bleachers or seating into that hill. And for the first time, we would have ADA accessible seating or, you know, access to the, to the fields. Because just like the baseball field, there's no way anyone who, any handicap type person is going to be able to access the baseball field or our track or the soccer field. So that's a huge thing. It would go, you know, it parallel that hill. And that's one of the big reasons for flipping it.
Thank you. And Allison.
I, Mike, I, question is more process. Are we, what is the decision and timeline that, that the school committee needs to pay attention? Are we needing to make a decision on which one of these we, we are going to do? And does that need to be done by the time that we're voting on the capital budget? Are we just saying thumbs up, we want to, we want to explore this? Just help me understand sort of what, what is the decision that's in front of us and when?
I can certainly speak to that if the chair will, is all right with that. So I think that, you know, the, ultimately, yes, we would like to have it in the capital planning for the capital budget for this year. So as we get to our budget, which will, will do the final votes in, in, in early to mid-March. So we'll, we'll ultimately make a decision at that point about what we're going to pursue. In the, in the materials I've given you, like the capital planning materials that were part of the, of the four towns meeting, I presume the most expensive option, because that sort of lays the sort of highest level of, of burden for people to react to. I've certainly had meetings with the town and, and the conversations we've had relative to this would, would, would be to, to, you know, try to match with the, with the, with the master planning process, which would be a reorientation. You know, I think there's some preference, but this is more of a, a staff-directed thing at this moment is around, you know, an artificial service. I think the, the, the short answer, and I think we need more to bolster this, would be around the idea of, of a higher amount of playability on, on that type of surface and durability on that type of surface. At the same time, that's, you know, that sort of sets the most expensive frame. Obviously, the economics is one piece. There are other questions that we'll need to address. I think that's part of the, what's going to happen over the next, you know, basically month to six weeks as we, as we move towards the, the full decision here. And I, I think the other thing about that is that, you know, feedback from the town of Amherst is also critically important because it does, you know, they're a big player within the regional schools, but also then they're also, you know, significantly impacted by virtue of its proximity to the, to the, the other resources and other recreational facilities within the, the center of town. And so, you know, they've been good partners with it. They want to continue to be, but they, you know, we also have to recognize, I think that, that they have a, a, you know, and want to have a strong say in, in the conversation and, and should, frankly.
Peter.
So thank you very, very much for this, for pushing this forward. Has languished for, for too long. And I mean, I'm not blaming anybody, you know, the pandemic is what it was. But you know, we were, it really felt like we were about to make some forward progress and then, you know, we slammed to a halt. So I mean, feedback, I mean, yeah, like let's do this. Let's do this post haste. As, as expeditious as possible, but as, as deliberative as necessary, I guess is always what I try and balance these two things with. Because I can't understate how, how urgent I think this, this is. Because it's a clear need that we've known for years that impacts student safety in addition to student quality of, of education. So, you know, I, I, I feel, I feel urgency to move on that timeline. At, at the same respect, I also want to be, you know, mindful of the financial commitment we're asking our four towns to make. And so I want to be able to say, if I'm going to vote, you know, we do X and it's one of the more expensive options. I want to be able to say to the four towns, we did our financial due diligence. And we, we looked not just at an estimated first cost, but we looked into a detailed way in terms of maintenance costs. We looked at life of the field. We looked at possible, possible revenue generating aspects of this and, and other financial variables I'm not thinking of at the moment. And we factored that in, we presented that to the school committee, we discussed it. That's, that's what I want to be able to say to the towns is that, you know, when we voted that you're going to, we're asking you to spend this money, we, we did that due diligence. And, you know, the second thing is, you know, a, a bit decoupled from that is, is I feel like we need to talk about some of those qualities you mentioned that we've just begun talking about, which is like playability, availability, environmental impact. And because there, there's so much there that I, I feel like I'm, I've just scratched the surface on just, you know, just from the public comment tonight, some very informative observations about, about how a turf field can help significantly with decreasing risk to, to players on, on wet fields. And how there's a lot of really interesting technology and evolution and synthetic materials that can make it very environmentally friendly, you know, and, and a host of other details. And so I feel like we need kind of like a qualitative matrix that compares the three options, right? And so where, where we can talk about those things and then, and to, to really prompt that discussion. Because while I love the idea of voting it early to mid-March, it's, it's a pretty condensed timeline. And I don't want to feel like I have to vote on something because I feel it's urgency if it's going to be rushed, right? So it's, it's a tall order and it's going to fall largely on you. So easy for me to ask for, but I just, I guess I just want to make sure that you know what you're getting into in terms of what we might expect for preparations, you know, to be able to vote this, you know, in a couple of months.
Oh, I believe both Margaret and Sarah Best had their hands up before me.
All right, that's why I'll take Margaret, Sarah Best, Jennifer, and then Dean.
Okay. I have one question, a, a couple of comments. I think that we need to stop calling this the reorientation of the track. I think that so much gets lost about what this project will do for athletics at the high school and the middle school. It isn't just turning it so the goalies, as somebody said, it's not about the goalies looking in the sun. It's a, it's a use of space that enables, I went to the final presentation of the committee. It was very informative. It would allow the schools to have additional fields. It would allow us to have a field that currently does not support what's required of any sport that's played on the field of the interior of that track. Doesn't meet any standards. The playability, the fact that we have one field that everybody has to practice on and then compete on means there's a huge amount of competition. It means that the field gets worn out, so it can't be used really by anybody. In the spring in particular, it's bad because we have such a wet spring and surfaces become unplayable. And so I just, I mean, and I've been on the track. If anybody's been on the track, you know what bad shape it's in and has been for many, many years. So, but I think we need to start, stop saying it's turning the track. Because then somehow in people's minds, that's all it is. And it's so much more. It's accessibility. You know, it's safety for the students because right now you can't really separate the people watching from the people playing. And that has caused some problems occasionally. So, you know, I could go on and on. You can tell how I feel about this. I have a question thinking about going back to my town to talk about this. How many students do we support with our athletic fields? I would really like to know if there's any way to know how many teams with how many students actually use our fields. That would be very helpful because I know people in my town who will say, well, what, why do we have to do anything about a few students? I don't think it's a few students. I think it's many, many students who participate. And it's an important part of what the students do as being students. So that would be very helpful information.
Margaret, Sarah Best.
Well, that is hard to follow. Very well done, Margaret. So I think I, I have two requests, I guess. So one would be to talk to our, our student athletes about the differences between playing on that field, like the field that is currently there, right, which has some things to be desired versus playing on a turf field. So after we had this conversation two weeks ago, I, both my kids play on field hockey on fields, right? And talking to them, the difference between playing on a grass field versus playing on a turf field, it is night and day. It's, it's hugely, 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 I'm not even sure that's the word. It's really, really different. And so I think talking to our student athletes about how they're feel about these is, is really important. Additionally, for those of us that haven't been on the committee when this project started being talked about, is there a way, is, can we have some of the information that would tell us more about what's happening? So I didn't know that the bleachers were being included and how that all factored in. I thought my own, you know, misunderstandings that it was just the field where it is being relocated. So I think if we can have a little bit of the information that was presented the first time around or where to find that, that would be really helpful, not only when we're having this conversation in the community at large, but when, like Margaret said, going back to talk to our towns about what this all, what this entails and, and how it, how it will benefit our students.
Give Doug a chance to respond real quick and then.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. So one of the things that, that we can give to you and is certainly available and, and answers more broadly than we will ultimately need, but, but gets at some of the questions around, you know, hours of playability and durability of surfaces of different types. So it's a, if you were to go to the Amherst website, the town of Amherst website, you'd want to search for the Amherst Center Recreation Working Group. And then you're looking for the master plan for those fields. But we'll try to find, I'll find that and, and make sure that's available to, to the full committee and, and that'll give you some preliminary information, give you some background on it. Couple of things on, on just the sort of bleachers. These costs are not currently involved in, not currently including setting up a bleeder, bleachers or seating systems. You know, that would add to the cost, obviously. It's obviously a future thing, but it does to the, the point that, that Stephen had was that, you know, we could leverage the, the slope of the hill that exists for seating in, in, in setting up seating if we reorient and, and, in, is likely the direction we would head. The other thing I'll point out is that, again, part of why the, just the resurfacing question is, is the number that it is, the 1.2, you know, if you look at, you know, I can't remember if it was Frontier, I think it was Frontier that recently resurfaced their track and they spent, I don't know, $650,000 or something. But part of that 1.2 in the, in the, just the, the resurfacing question, there are a couple of the things, one of which is, is to bring some ADA accessibility features to the existing circumstance. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, more readily and, and better resolved with the reorientation and the, and the setup in that direction. But nonetheless, those, those accessibility questions would, would be part of the, the work that we do relative to even just the, the least expensive option. The other thing is that there is some, some additional work relative to moving some field events and, and, and doing some work at the, at the existing location to promote safety and, and the other track and field events. So it's not just a, a pure resurfacing. There's more to it. Even in the, in the least expensive option, there's several other pieces that play into that. Excuse me.
Jennifer.
I have, I have two questions. One is, when the district embarks on a project like this, do we get cost estimates from more than one vendor or partner? Like, is there any sort of procurement process that involves competitive bids or anything like that? And just a second, I know you said, Doug, there were state funds and that come along with CPA funds. But is, is, have we investigated other sources of state funds? Like, isn't something we should talk to Mindy Dom or Joe Comerford about?
So I can answer, yeah. So relative to the competitive bidding process, yeah, this is, this is just to get a sort of, you know, what we're doing at this point is, is a very early stage. Get a sense of the size of the number we're going to need. You know, when we get to the actual project itself, you know, we'd have to, to, to do some more intensive design work and get to what they call bidable documents within would be, you know, put out for bid and through the full procurement process that's required by state law and regulation. As far as other sources of, of funds, you know, you know, certainly there are things called, there are the grants that are out there. There's a thing called a park grant that we've utilized in the town for some recreational facilities. That might be something we're, this is eligible for. I don't know. We'll have to investigate that. And then obviously any, you know, we, we wouldn't leave any stone not turned over relative to this. I think, you know, we'll look at that. I think the lion's share of it's going to be on the four communities and, you know, to, to sort of carry the burden. And then we'll, we'll try to augment that in, in a number of different ways. Whether it be, you know, external fundraising, grants, gifts, et cetera, are all part and parcel of the, of that overall project.
Gene and then Allison.
You know, I'm a sports fan and I, I raised two sons who were good athletes in school. And so I find myself, you know, surprising myself because I, I just feel as though we're in no cut, you know, no cuts to the school. And let's go full ahead with everything. That's what I'm hearing. And I know the town I'm in is just bare bones. And I, I really am concerned with any increase in costs to Leverett. And something has to be done about the field. That's obvious. And maybe the less you do now, it comes back to burn you later on. I don't know. But I, I just want to be sure we're covering all our bases. I, I think the town of Leverett should assume more than one third, Amherst should assume more than one-third of the cost. It's, you know, like you said, it's there. I'd like to know how much use the community makes of the track, for example, or even the field and off-hours. It just doesn't seem like a fair division of costs to me. I want to talk to people in Leverett as what their, what their feeling is. But, you know, it's, it's, any increase in our regional contribution is a big deal in our little town here. And I'm sure other people have that issue. So I'd love to have a wonderful field, but I'm just, I just would want a lot more information and a real parity, knowing that there's a fairness in how we're dividing up the cost.
Allison.
Yeah, I, I, I think a lot of the questions and comments that folks have said already, I don't, I don't want to repeat other than to just say I, I fully support this project. I was actually shocked when I, one of the public commentators stated, described when this first started. I, I, it's, it's almost horrifying. I, it's it's almost horrifying that it, we knew this back in 2012. That's 10 years ago and and we haven't, we haven't moved. So I think we're beyond sort of, um, the point where we need to address this. Um, and and the question, you know, the the hardest part is going to be is not if we should do it, but how are we going, how how will we pay for it? Um, and I appreciate Jennifer's comments too, because I that I I was thinking also of not just other grants, um, and gifts and fundraising, but also, um, sponsorship, um, or or gifts from from sort of non-traditional foundations or, um, organizations that we, um, don't usually sort of reach out to, um, you know, youth sports affiliated, um, foundations, for example. Um, uh, there's, there's foundations that support, um, promoting, um, physical activity among, you know, underrepresented students, for example. So I, you know, I wonder if there is, there is some really creative fundraising that we can do to sort of boost, decrease the amount that, um, towns have to spend. Um, and I'll just also second the comment, um, from Sarah Bass about the difference in play. We're almost, um, you know, by, it's not just the, just the playability and the amount of use that we would be able to get out of an artificial turf versus a natural turf field. Um, but it also impacts the competitiveness and and sort of the ability of our teams to play and compete with, um, with some of our, some of our neighboring towns that do have, it's, it's, it's field hockey. I don't know if lacrosse is played on that field too, but I mean, any, any of those, those sports, it's, it's an entirely different game when you're playing on the artificial versus natural turf. Um, so, yeah. Um, I I'd be curious to data, and I know that the data was in that original presentation about, um, players and and youths, um, from youth sports, numbers of students. Um, I don't know if the towns where they were, um, the dating up of participation from different towns, but I would be curious to see that data. Um, and I also second Mr. Demling's, uh, request for sort of a grid that shows certain considered factors that we're going to consider in making that decision and 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 having sort of an easy to compare grid, um, across the three options.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I mean, I want to just thank, um, Gene for for raising that issue of of the financial impact on our towns. And I mean, it comes back to my original comment, which is I I want to be able to confidently and accurately say to the four towns, you know, if if I were to vote in support of something like this, that we went through the financial due diligence and to, you know, echo the points brought up by Jennifer and Allison, you know, we need to be able to make sure that we explored every opportunity, not just through CPA, but any other available grant funding, maybe some things that we might not know. I I really want to thank the Amherst Hurricane Athletic Boosters tonight for the thoughtful input and their offer to collaborate. They've been an amazing support group over the years, have done an incredible amount of fundraising in support of our student athletes. Um, you know, so so that that's going to be, um, a part of it. Um, you know, I I do think, Doug, um, part, part of this is 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 making sure that we clearly present the numbers accurately. Um, uh, not just, um, but in terms of to avoid public misinterpretation, right? So when we say Amherst a third, it's, it's, it's a third in addition to the regional assessment, right? And so when we're looking at that last block, for example, the total funding for Amherst is 86%, right? So a small note, but you don't want people in Pelham or Leverett and Shrewsbury feeling like the whole cost Amherst is only going to pay up there, things like that. Um, uh, but but yeah, I I think, I think we have a a tall order ahead of us for for a compressed timeframe. But I think the urgency demands that we make the effort to to see if we can achieve it.
And, uh, Margaret, did you still have a?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and say this. Personal experience, lacrosse never gets close to that field. That's, you know, they play in a muddy spot over behind the high school. So there you go.
Yeah, I I would just also add for, you know, food for thought that, uh, not not that it makes up for the entire cost of the project, but we also have the the fact that we don't have a track that we can host meets in, which we could also then host like tournaments and other events, you know, special Olympics included. They made inquiries. We also, and I think the folks in Pelham could attest to this. Our athletic facilities are also facilities that we can rent out and then get some sort of income back from. We get $0 for that track, $0 for the infield as well currently. So that's just, just something to add to the conversation there. I think Doug and then go back to Stephen.
Why don't you let Stephen go first?
I like that idea.
Yeah, I just wanna, Margaret, the name of that field is called the Snake Pit.
Fair enough. Uh, Doug, go ahead.
So the last couple of things I'll I'll add in sort of a bit of a good news, bad news. So sort of from a bad news standpoint, so when we, you know, when we go to authorize this and ask the communities to sort of, you know, chip in, uh, you know, we we will, and this is true, you know, in town, you know, in town funding of these kind of capital projects as well as that often, you know, uh, will want to have grant fundraising and and will want to have, you know, uh, uh, capital, you know, campaigns, you know, uh, you know, through organizations, that sort of thing. When we get sent the brass tax, we will have to, um, you know, we'll have to authorize is for the full amount. And then we will be obviously hopeful that, you know, that burden will be reduced, but all four towns uh, will will need to be prepared to pay pay the full price if there aren't, if those other things don't materialize. If those, uh, you know, sort of if that cash is on hand when we go to do the authorization, then of course we can use it. But if it's not in hand yet, uh, it's all perspective. And so it it isn't something that we can, uh, sort of with good and with with full due diligence, you know, be able to to, uh, authorize less than in the hopes of raising money through other means. So we we do have to keep that in mind. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that, um, you know, as far as the usage is that, you know, this, this facility in its current state and otherwise is is one utilized not just by athletics, but also by the full, full school, uh, population by virtue of the fact that it is, uh, you know, facility that is utilized by the physical education classes. So it really, you know, benefits all the students at the high school, some to a larger degree by virtue of the participation in sports. But I do want to, you know, remind people that that it does impact, you know, the PE classes that that utilize and want to utilize that space and are sometimes limited on using that space because it's not as as functional or available, uh, as it might be if it were in better, better state of repair.
Uh, Mike, did you still have a?
Yeah, just very briefly, I just want to note that this was identified. Another data point in terms of the history is that we had a long, thorough uh, community engaged process to develop strategic plan for the regional district. And and this was part of it was about our facilities, right? So, you know, I know for some coming in, because that was pre-pandemic and everything has changed, but this was identified by students in the community as a critical issue, uh, years ago, you know, not just from, you know, uh, people who were directly might be involved in it, but in general, there was a sense from our students, in particular, student reps on that group that this was a major issue, that they didn't feel like, you know, in terms of feeling respected, and that's true of internal and external uh, facilities, but certainly, you know, the fields and and for all students, as Doug described, was something that, you know, our students were really telling us very clearly needed to shift. So I I think it's just worth noting that it is in our strategic plan. We need to adjust that over time because of the pandemic related, uh, shifts that we're making and have it reflected, but it, this isn't coming out of left field. This has been something that's been talked about in multiple forums and multiple communities. We've gotten feedback from multiple stakeholder groups over the years.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions or comments? Uh, go ahead, Doug.
Just one last thing. I want to thank everybody for their input tonight. It's really helpful to me and and useful. Um, feel free to reach out to me with any, you know, sort of other questions across your mind, your thoughts that you have relative to this. Um, if you know of other funding sources, if you stumble across them or are aware of them, you know, other grant, you know, programs, that sort of thing. Um, you know, uh, please, please forward those along to me and and we'll put those in the mix and and try to, you know, sort of accumulate those and and evaluate and and research all of those. But thank you for your your time on this tonight.
Thank you for your presentation here and your wealth of knowledge. Um. Do we need to vote to take a five minute break? Or we can pretty much just look at the clock, see it's 8:50, go ahead and scooch away for five minutes and we'll be back at 8:55 then. Should we have synchronized watches before we went? Oh, perfect.
I just used the.
We should do last person who returns has to sign the warrant.
I like that game. Alright, so seeing as how we're all back, the next item, I believe this is Doug again, Esser Fund Spending Update.
Yep, and I think, um, this has been in the packet twice before, uh, and we keep on getting bumped. So, um, I'll see if I can do this quickly, given that, um, it's been a long meeting and and a fair number of people had a pretty lengthy meeting right before this one. So this is just an accounting of where we were. It's now about a month old. Our spending on the, uh, I'm not going to display it because I think it's really small font if we do that and, uh, but the link is on our public link, so people can follow along. Um, it's probably a little easier than me displaying it. Um, a short story is where where the spending plan that was, uh, shared and and supported by the school committee is being implemented. Where, uh, there are some areas where we're still in the process of getting spending going. And I think the the thing I wanted to highlight, uh, in particular is that it evolves over time. So as you all know, a couple of weeks ago, it became apparent that getting high quality respirators for our students, uh, which no one was thinking about three months ago, became all of a sudden something that we felt like we needed to do. And so we are using the Esser Funds as a way, because it's, it is intended to be stimulus, oh, excuse me, COVID related spending. Uh, so we are utilizing, um, the funds for those kind of purchases. We didn't update the document with that, but we purchased a significant number of masks for the middle school and high school uh, for students, because, you know, you've heard me say it before, that family income shouldn't be a determining factor in the, uh, quality and efficiency uh, of masks that students, our students have. So there's nowhere in the line item budget where we would, we would purchase, uh, masks of significant quantity. Um, so again, we didn't update it, uh, over the last couple of weeks as we added that, but we have been flexible as long as it, the purchase was consistent with the Esser Grant. So we are spending consistent with what was approved. Some of the things like HVAC staff, all those pieces are pending, finding qualified staff to fill roles. Um, some of the ELL pieces, you know, really are designed for next year because the multi-year grant. Uh, by the time it was approved, students were already back and, uh, therefore, meeting students before they started the school year wasn't an option. So there are some areas in green that are highlighted highlighted in green. That's where the spending has absolutely been in place. The areas that are not highlighting green has been where we haven't done spending and the big ticket item. Uh, you know, so a lot of the not spending has occurred because we haven't been able to staff those positions. The other one is compensatory services. That's falls in special education, and that's because compensatory services, uh, typically are offered over the summer months. Uh, while students are in school, it's hard to give, offer compensatory services because they already have a full school day. So extending the school day further is not generally. extending the school day further is not generally a successful strategy, but we know we will be providing compensatory services over the summer months, we did an expanded summer school program last year, and that's when that spending will occur, so it's not that we're not planning to spend on special education in that way, it's just the right time would be not during the school year, but during the summer months. So, you know, as things evolve, you know, the only kind of medium-ticket item that I would suggest was not on here, was again, purchasing K95 masks that were tested at 97% efficiency filtration, we did purchase some for the middle school as well, that are the smaller size, because some of our, particularly in seventh graders, you know, kids develop at different rates, and what we found is when we only had the adult ones, some of our seventh and eighth graders, you know, if it's not a tight fit, then it's actually not doing what you want it to do, so we did purchase and bring over some of the younger student masks, younger style masks, which I think are technically like seven to twelve-year-olds on average, but and that's working a lot better for some of our middle school kids. And that's a very, very quick summary at nine o'clock of our Esser spending, and our plan is to bring this back in the spring and be able to share more details where we are, so this is now, you know, again, it's a little over, actually, a month old, but kept this agenda item, kept on getting bumped from prior meetings, so I'm happy, Doug is happy to answer any questions folks might have, but we just want to be respectful of your time in the hour.
Peter, go ahead.
So first, per policy requirement, I moved to extend our meeting time by thirty minutes.
Now, second. Take a quick roll call vote. So, Jean.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Irv. Allison.
Allison, aye.
Steven.
Steven, aye.
Sarah Bess.
Sarah Bess, aye.
Peter.
Peter, aye.
Margaret.
Margaret, aye.
And Ben, aye, it is unanimous, we will continue for another half hour. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, my question won't take a half an hour, so thank you for this, I don't think it will. So, my question, so thank you for this update, we've covered this a number of times, and I feel like you're managing it well, the one question I had was on the line item for high school, FTE for more elective teachers, seventy thousand, expected years three, higher-than-expected re-enrollment from families who chose other schools last year, resulting in larger class sizes for electives, first of all, wooed, wooed for higher-than-expected level of enrollment of families, so that's a good, so this is a good problem. But, but this is a staffing thing, right, and you know, we heard, we heard Irv caution earlier about not wanting to use one-time funds for, for every-time expenses, so I don't know if there's something particular about this position that you're, you're anticipating it cycling off, or if you could just kind of speak to that approach.
Yeah, absolutely, so I think it was really, we had the combination of moving to a block schedule and having uncertain enrollment, and so that led us to be at a place where it was hard to predict, so this is a lot of small decimals, right, of of course, here, of course, there, in different departments, we feel like now that we're committed to the block, we have more stability of our enrollment, we should be able to absorb this next year, and really, this was around, you know, it was challenged to be as we want to be as flexible as we can be, but we do have a hard, like, we do have to offer courses, bells ring, there has to be a teacher in front of kids, and there needs to be a certain number of seats, and it was really hard to predict all of those things, given the uncertainty of last year, both in terms of how the schedule, with the change to the four-by-four block was going to shake out, and our enrollment, particularly at the high school, middle school was pretty much as expected, the high school, we ended up, even from October 1st to now, I think, as you saw in the report last month, with a bump in enrollment, so, you know, we do feel like we'll be able to manage it differently with less unknowns going into next year, so I don't believe we'll need to continue spending in this way, you know, I think it's forced us to be perhaps, you know, to the point earlier about budget, you know, we're not as efficient as we might be if we weren't in a pandemic where we didn't know the enrollment, and we didn't know what courses kids were going to take, and everyone was enrolling, you know, and registering online last year, and invariably, that meant when kids actually got back in the school, they're like, I don't know if I want to take this course, right, you know, like, all the things that you would normally think are really easy when you're you know, and remote learning and making decisions in the spring or the late winter about what courses you want to take the next year, it was really hard, right, you know, and I empathize for the kids, and now that we're in person, we have a better sense of the flow, that I think we should be able to absorb that through efficiencies, you know, not job-cut efficiencies, just by naturally, naturally looking at where enrollments are and offering the courses that better are better tied to student enrollment and student decisions and choice. Didn't take half an hour, my answer, I went on a little long, but it wasn't half an hour, Peter.
Any other questions? Sweet, so we will roll along to the School Equity Advisory Committee Update. So the update I have is that we are still regrouping, including getting school committee members onboard, we need at least one other onboard, and also, we were supposed to have had a meeting tomorrow, that'll be rescheduled to the following week, give some more time to regroup here. I don't know, Irv had mentioned that you might have some interest, is that marinated and grown into a blossoming interest?
Yes, I think I'll just do it, and, and see where it goes.
That's the easiest it's ever been for me to talk someone into something, I like that, I mean, I appreciate your, your service and in all, in all seriousness, a new perspective is, will be absolutely appreciated and welcomed. Thank you, and I'll fill you in more offline after that. So, oh, Mike, do you have the ability to, do you have the agenda planning document up, or? Wait, I have it tabbed, I can actually share it, I'm being.
Sorry, I can do it in a second, I just was putting Irv, I was trying to update the other document right now with Irv joining that committee, I can, so if you give me ten seconds, I can do it, but let me just, before I forget, I want to make sure I get Irv on there. So, here we go. So I could just read it in case people are having a hard time making it out, so we have a joint meeting, the next, or joint item at the next meeting, which is a report that was talked about prior, about school leaders and challenges that school leaders have in our district, and some recommendations. I think that'd be great if it was actually a joint meeting, I did have a conversation with the Pelham Chair today, and Pelham was involved, so rather than ask the same consultant to go to three meetings, which we wouldn't do, have that as being a joint agenda item. Perhaps utilize that to have a Union 26 meeting, because they should probably reorganize, but, you know, try not to mix my metaphors, so to speak. We should have a school choice hearing. And budget hearings, we got feedback from the committees, so Dr. Slaughter will work on, you know, developing that. There was something on two weeks, or for tonight, but the scheduling worked better for the ARPS Happiness Project, which is a project we're doing with UMass students, looking at student well-being, consistent with the goals for the year. And coming back to policy reviews, as well as pool testing for extracurriculars, that's what we had on the agenda. Pretty, pretty healthy-sized agenda, but see if there's things we're missing, or things we should add or delete.
Allison, something you had to add.
I may be misremembering this, because COVID year was wonky, but don't we see the full, full budget book before the budget hearing?
Yeah, we should probably do budget presentation, you're right, that, that should be two weeks later, you're a hundred percent right, thank you for that.
So then the hearing would be the fifteenth then, correct? Yeah, Meline, go ahead.
I just had a quick question, so for that meeting, is that a joint meeting between the Regional and Amherst School Committee, or is it a joint item, but it's a regional meeting, just because I work backwards with how I get the minutes done, so I wasn't sure if the Amherst minute should also be set for the first.
Mike, go ahead.
So, it'll be, it'll be listed as a joint meeting, what'll happen, what I would recommend to the chairs would happen is, that'll actually be the first agenda item, and then the other committees will adjourn, and then we'll go through the rest of the meeting, a typical region meeting, where we'll have public comment, and you know, all the other stuff, but we would typically, when we have a one item that's for all committees, we'd simply call those committees to order, have that one item, adjourn the rest of the committees, and then get back into the regular flow of a regional meeting, seems like it works better for the committee, and actually works a lot better for the minutes as well, if that's okay with the group.
Margaret, go ahead.
So, Mike, do I understand correctly, so Pelham will also be part of that?
The Chair communicated her interest to that about two, three hours ago.
So it'll be a three-committee meeting, that, that.
Yeah, because otherwise Pelham would, would hear me give the report, instead of the person who wrote it, and that's, I'm way worse than he would be about presenting his own report, so I didn't want to disadvantage the Pelham folks, because Pelham
thanks for.
Pelham leaders were involved in it, and you know, it seems like it'd be better to do holistically.
Okay.
Right, were there any other items that folks wanted to be added to the agenda for the first? Peter, go ahead.
Um, so this doesn't have to be soon, but Dr. Morse, were you thinking of circling back on like, on block schedule, I know, I know, we've gone through it this year. I think we had talked about reviewing it, and, and seeing if we wanted to, you know, steady state. Is that something to plan for the spring, and just?
Yeah, we could, we could even do a process update of where they are on the planning, and you know, perhaps even on the fifteenth, I think it'd be the first has a lot of reports, but let me talk to the team there, the high school admin team, and see if we can do that on the fifteenth. Because it does apply to budget and relate to budget, so I think it'd be a nice one to dovetail with that.
Any other agenda items to add? Allison, go ahead.
Also, not for a February meeting, but it occurred to me from another meeting that I was at, it would be and, and actually, this is more as much a question for the rest of the committee, as, as it's a suggestion, but to get an update on the implementation of the math curriculum, the changed math curriculum, I think it's been a couple of years now, so it might be interesting in the spring to hear an update on sort of progress, tweaks, changes, et cetera.
Tentatively for April 12th? Any other items? Alright. So, we can move on to the warrant report. That'd be Allison, correct, still?
Yes, so I, before January 4th, I signed some on behalf of the, of the committee, and then Ben asked me to continue signing them, but there's one, I think, that you signed in here. It has your signature, I didn't recognize that, so I have several to read. My last one for the region. So I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $362,690.72 for a warrant dated January 6, 2022. This includes general fund expenses of $292,716.64 revolving fund expenses of $27,633.81, grant fund expenses of $41,604.32, and capital fund of $735.95. And I believe I also signed that on January 6th. Sorry, I'm pulling them up from my email. I, Alice McDonald, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $54,244.16 for a warrant dated December 29, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $22,108.81 revolving fund expenses of $9,625, and grant funds of $22,510.35, and I signed that on January 9th. I, Alice McDonald, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $802,470.58 for a warrant dated January 13, 2022. This includes general fund expenses of $80,393.35 revolving fund expenses of $300, and grant fund expenses of $1,777.23, and I signed that on January 13, 2022. I believe that I read this one at the last meeting, let me just double check. Yeah, so that's it, and then, Ben, there was one in there that you signed.
Yep, so I, Ben Harrington, authorized by my signature to the scholarship warrant in the amount of $3,000 for the warrant dated 1/11/22, this includes $3,000 to other fund, and I signed that on January 18, 2022. So, do we, do we have any gifts? I don't see, no gifts. In that case, I will entertain a motion. Allison.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So, roll call vote, you'll go Allison.
Allison, aye.
Peter.
Peter.
Margaret.
Margaret, aye.
Irv.
Irv, aye.
Sarah Bess.
Sarah Bess, aye.
Steven. We'll get back to you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, aye.
Jean.
Jean, aye.
One more shot at Steve. Alright, Ben, aye, so we are adjourned at 9:18 on the eighteenth of January.
Thanks.
See you.
Bye.